Okay, welcome to those that are joining us from home and happy new year to everyone. This is a work session of the Coastal City Council. It's Monday, January 11th. We're here to talk tonight about the Bay Program and Stormwater Permitting Update. I'm assuming that this will include some updates on what we're doing for TMDL.
Yes.
And just some of our talking acronyms, O-M-A, that's Total Maximal Daily.
Limit.
And basically loading phosphorus and, I'll move it again?
No, phosphorus, nitrogen, and sediment.
Into the Bay Program, into the headwaters and just that. So without further ado, Ellen, if you'd like to go through the grading, you may also go through the now and then.
Okay. If we could, I don't know if we need to get the lights or not, but basically, as you know, the Bay Program, we've been talking about this for a while, is a very aggressive program. We have very rigorous pollution removal requirements and we have a very, the program has a very fast pace. So because we have to do it quickly and because the requirements are so intense, it's very expensive and it takes a lot of effort and money. So first of all, let's start with some good news. One thing that council has been interested in seeing and people in the Hampton Roads area particularly have been interested in seeing is credit for some of the work we've done in the past. The Hampton Roads localities and Pecosin in particular have put a lot of money into cleaning up the Bay before this new Bay TMDL program was implemented. And we've, people have been advocating, we've been advocating to get some credit. And this summer we had the opportunity-
(noise)
Okay.[135.16][135.16](laughing) This summer we had the opportunity to once again report all the stormwater pollution removal practices that we have in the city to the state. We've done this on numerous occasions and we've tried to get credit by providing this data to them. This summer, we had a very intensive effort. We had two engineering interns this summer and basically they spent a good deal of their summer vacation going through files and working with me to get the technical details straight. We inspected our ponds and infiltration basins out in the field and had to fill out a very detailed spreadsheet and submit it to the state. This whole effort also took about 22,000 in consultant fees, of which we received $16,000 back in a grant. So in addition to staff time, it cost us about $6,000 in consultant fees. What happened is when we submitted our Bay action plan for this first five, first year, or this first goal, the 2018 goal, where we have to show the state how we're going to remove the first 5% of this, of the pollution we have to remove, we didn't include the existing practices upfront because when we were preparing this and when we presented the information to you in May, we weren't sure if the state would give us credit for any, for some or any of the historic practices we already had in the ground. So since we have heard from the state, since they are giving us credit for some of these, we've gone back and revised our action plan. And the action plan has been online for public comment. It was last summer. It's been reviewed by the state. This is what it looks like. And the revised action plan will go on the city website after we get comments back from this January revision. At this point, I don't anticipate comments, so hopefully we're gonna, we have it conditionally approved. We should have a final approval pretty soon. What the net impact of being able to take credit for some of our existing ponds is that our 5% goal, that 2018 goal, will be met after the Oxford Run projects that we've discussed in the past are constructed. So between what we've done already and the two projects that are up for consideration this, tonight, that we've discussed before, we should be, we should meet and exceed the five, that 5% goal. So if you, when we've talked about the action plan in the past, one of the goals was to only commit to the actions we absolutely had to do to meet each goal. One of the issues that comes along with the Bay Program is the Bay Program is constantly approving new treatment measures. Some of the ones that are still under consideration, that haven't been fully credited yet, or we don't know if they, we will receive credit for them, are still being, are still under technical review. So we don't want to commit to more than we have to do for each of those goals, you know, the 2018 goal, the 2023 goal, and the next goal, until we know we have the most cost-effective measures available. So since we can meet the 5% goal without building the filter strips and enhanced swales that we talked about in May, we're going to go ahead and save those for the 2023 plan and reserve the right to place them with something that is more cost-effective if better options become available. So the plan you're going to see on the website looks just like the plan that was there before, except it includes those exist, that existing credit, or that credit for existing ponds, plus it has, the filter strips and the enhanced swell have been removed. Doesn't mean we won't do them, just means that we're not committing to doing them by 20, or by 2018. So as a reminder, this is what we have left to do. This slide is from the May council presentation. These are the Stormwater Local Assistance Fund Grant Projects. We have 134,000 from the state of Virginia to help fund these projects. And the projects are a wet pond located adjacent and across the driveway to the library and created wetlands located at the intersection of the Oxford Run Ditch and the Victory Boulevard Ditch. Both of these treatment practices have an additional benefit in that they provide more flood storage capacity to the Oxford Run system. They're not for the benefit of any new development. They're not being funded or constructed in conjunction with any new development. They're simply to treat existing stormwater runoff and to provide more flood control for existing development, or for existing properties. The next steps, so we've got, you know, after that, we'll get the, we'll be at that 2018 goal, so what are we going to do the next couple of years? Okay, we're not going to wait for 2018 to necessarily begin construction, our staff doesn't recommend that, on the 2023 GMPs. Reaching 40% of the total pollution removal requirement in 2023 is going to be extremely difficult. So we want to go ahead and start developing new projects and if grant funding becomes available, we want to go ahead and take advantage of the grant funding. What having the projects for this cycle finished in 2016 allows us to do is to wait for some additional grant funding or to lump projects together, so we have a better shot at winning a grant. And also, let's just take some time and see if the state approves some more cost-effective options. And an example of that is the, excuse me, the Bay Program is currently reviewing oyster aquaculture. So maybe we can get some credit for oysters. So fiscal year 2016, complete the Oxford Run projects through December 2017. Planning and project development for what goes into the next round of treatment options. Once again, see what the Bay Program's doing. The other thing we're going to do is we're going to monitor the model. The Bay Program is going to rerun this very complex computer model that's supposed to simulate the pollution that's being removed from the Chesapeake Bay. This is the model that our pollution removal requirements are based on. So in 2017, they're going to input more data, they're going to run the model, and we're going to figure out where we are because what is 5% of the total is today isn't what 5% of the total is after the model's run in 2017. So anytime we have an opportunity to provide better land use information, we're going to do that. Hopefully, we're going to be able to get them to recognize the fact that we have wetlands in the city instead of calling it grass, for example. We're also going to be looking and preparing for grants. Once again, trying to find the best time and the most cost-effective way to build projects. Challenges, once again, the Bay Model is going to change the numbers, so we have a moving target to deal with. I can tell you how far along we are in terms of reaching that 100% goal, since we're exceeding it now with the projects we've proposed in this revised action plan, but the percentages will all change after 2017. We really don't know what the final goal is until they've run that model again. The 2023 goal is going to cost a lot more money. What happens now, what's going to happen now is you're going to hear people talk about how much cheaper the program is now than what was originally projected based on what people are saying it costs to reach the 5% goal. Well, during the first 5% goal, people are taking advantage of things they have in the ground already. They're building projects on land they already own. The costs are going to rise exponentially in the entire Bay watershed as governments run out of the land they own to build new projects. So even though you're going to see that things are less than expected in this first five-year cycle, that's going to change over time. It's going to get exponentially more expensive to build, to reach this goal unless we have better options from the Bay Program. The other thing we're going to be spending a lot of time on is our other stormwater permit work. Every time we get this five-year city stormwater permit, the work is more intensive and more costly. There's more paperwork, there's more computer information.
Ellen, just for the benefit of council, once again, and maybe anyone listening at home, the goal for the first five years was a 5% reduction.
Yes.
What's the goal level for the second five?
40%.
So that would be 35 additional percent?
Yes.
And then the final five-year period is the remaining 60%-
Correct.
-to get to 100. That gives you a sense of-
Right.
...the exponential. In addition to everything else, the percentage is significantly higher in both of the second five-year periods.
All right, it's a combination of having to do more and everything getting more expensive to do.
Ellen, before we move into the model run, there was some conversation about the model maybe not being accurate. Are they still looking at the model to tweak the model at all, do you know?
They are trying to tweak the model. It is a very, very complex model. It's actually a series of computer models. And what, the only thing we can really do is every time we have the opportunity, inform the process, to give them better data, we're doing that. Some of those data requests get a little time-intensive, but at least we're, we're making the effort. And the other thing is through organizations like the Virginia Municipal Stormwater Association and also through the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, we're kind of advocating for more realistic results. Some of the things we've been advocating for are better resolution data to determine land cover and also for the inclusion of wetlands in the model.
There was some conversation, and maybe I'm mixing things up, there was some conversation about Pecosin being included in areas that were really not adjacent to Pecosin or included, which may have, may have swayed our percentages unusually.
Yes.
Does that still exist?
Yes, and that was a state decision. The state decided to take all the smaller cities, the phase, they're called Phase II communities in the stormwater permit world, and lump them together by river shed. So we are lumped in with the York River, as is York County, which drains to both the York River and directly into the Bay. And Hampton, actually, part of Hampton's pollution removal requirements are based on York River water quality. So what happened is the really old practices and the really old, the oldest work we did to help save the Bay got averaged over the entire York River watershed. Our pollution removal requirements are based on an average of water quality throughout the York River watershed. So instead of looking at what's right off our shores, we're looking at an average over a very large land mass. Okay?
Ellen, I have a couple of questions. Can you remind me again, when we're talking 5% of, you know, of the goal, we're talking 5% of what?
The numbers that are in the watershed, the amount we have to remove based on our size, an impervious area for a York River watershed community.
And will that change with growth?
That will change as we have more paved area. That will change as the model is rerun, and that will change as water quality is monitored throughout the watershed.
But will that change be offset by the practices that we put into development?
Yes.
Will we also be able to ask development to do more, that would go towards our credit?
Yeah, and that's, that's a really important part, point. With the new stormwater requirements, regulations that developers have to meet, they have to treat 100% of their, of the stormwater pollution that they create through development. So it's basically in terms of, so they're handling that. What we're looking at is what is existing, okay? So most of the new development doesn't really enter into that.
And then my other question was, on one of the pictures, you had create a wetlands and a wet pond in some of the remaining work on the projects. I'm just curious, do we know that creating a wet pond would be more beneficial than having wetlands?
That was based on, in that particular, on that particular site, yes, based on the consultant and the preliminary feasibility analysis for that, just based on the configuration, the amount of land, the type of soil and everything coming to it. Also, I think a wet pond in that particular location may also have some recreational community benefit that you wouldn't get with a created wetland.
Is that scale right? Is it that large?
No, it's close, but that's eyeballing it.
And it's not, I mean, you just basically used a symbol and brought it in there.
Correct.
So it's more in parallel with actual-
It actually does kind of angle that way, and the reason why is the, the end that's closest to the parking lot and to the driveway is where the water is coming in from the ditch system at City Hall and the pipe system from City Hall. And the pond, the part of the pond that's angled back toward the recreational trail, by the way, it doesn't impact the recreational trail, that portion of it is, that's where the pipe that leaves the pond and it, and drains into the ditch system is. So by angling the pond in that, that way, you're basically saving on piping and some other costs.
Ellen?
Not necessary, but perhaps something council may want to consider? Not needed for the design?
Sagged water.
Yeah.
Not much of stagnant water in city-
Understood.
Or skates and all that. Just thought, and power to the availability of towels.
Roughly, what do you have to do to create a wetland? Just generally, quickly.
Basically, what they're doing is they're, what we talked about in May is they're widening out the ditch there. They have a, there will be a couple areas of deeper pools of water, and the rest will basically be planted with plantings and kind of leveled out, and water will sit there. So you'll have very shallow water and then also deeper water. So it'll be regrading it and also adding some plantings.
Are these ponds going to require fencing around them?
No. Fencing is not required by any requirement. If council wants to put fencing, we can do that. Thinking the wet ponds at least 10 feet deep with a gent, a fairly gentle slope down and with a flat bench just as you get to the water surface.
It won't be any deeper than the ditch already is, though, right?
It will be deeper than the ditch already is, yes.
Next, do you think they will?
A pretty deep ditch.
And that's, I'd need to, okay.
It's kind of like all the old chess and the old ponds. It's something we've had to-
Yeah. In 2003 or '04, when, or the city council at that time considered pond safety and we've been kind of working through the idea that there were three possible ways to kind of discourage people from getting into a pond. One was landscaping, the thorny bushes idea where you make it very inconvenient for people to get past the landscaping. A safety bench, that flat area at the bottom of the slope before you get into deep water. And the third idea was fencing. The first responders want to make sure they can get to the pond easily and they can see what is going on in there, so even if you do fencing, you don't want something that blocks people from seeing what's going on. And the way we operated with developments was two, was that the developer should choose two out of those three methods as safety measures. Nothing's going to keep someone who really wants to get in the pond out, but those would be a little bit of a deterrent.
More questions?
I asked that question because of the potential depth of it and its proximity to the walking path back there.
Right. Okay.
So walk me through your time, I mean, so this council does, will get a decision made this evening, right, on proceeding on the two ponds. After this, our next target, not only the, the next is 2023.
Correct.
And until 2023, while we're, when we have other avenues or grants available, whatever we do until then continues to build towards that 40%.
Correct.
Got it, 2023.
Correct, and the extra credit we've already gotten, we're exceeding our, with the revised plan, we're exceeding the 5% goal already. We have a cup, two of the pollutants around eight, are around 8%, another one is around 14%. The addition, everything above that 5% gets credited toward the next, 2023.
Everything above 5% gets credited.
Everything we do early gets credited.
And I think that we need to keep that in the forefront of the state and federal legislatures that, just because the cost is now very low, that 2023 simply may modify the goal significantly for them. I think that's important for us to keep maybe on our legislative agendas, so that they understand they'll take this particular 5% as a benchmark, look towards what 2023 will mean. I'd say if we can't get there, just say if we get the process and also be able to be a form for, and that's the fact is if you don't get what you need. Now, the, what Hampton, the city of Hampton is doing at Coliseum is associated with, am I right?
Correct.
Am I correct?
Yes.
And as you can probably use that as a target of what, I mean, a project large enough that will make a 40% difference in the city, that's an awfully big undertaking to take to, that's sort of to get them to 5%.
Mm-hmm.
Interesting.
Yeah.
And just along the lines of the cost, as we discussed in May, the goals, right now, the state's goal for cost-effective removal of phosphorus is $50,000 a pound. The measures that we just finished talking about were around, I've got it somewhere, I think were around 43,000 a pound. I'll have that at the council meeting. And when you include the grant money, we're, I think, around 30,000 a pound, or less than that. So it's, it's cheap for the Bay TMDL program. I'm not saying it's cheap, but, and I don't think we're going to see that type of cost-effectiveness in the future.
A pound?
A pound of phosphorus, correct.
Crazy.
Okay.
Maybe we should put that on the future markets. If I don't know what-
Yes. Stormwater, urban stormwater is one of the most expensive ways to remove phosphorus and nitrogen. Agricultural removal is a lot cheaper.
Legislative development is not compared. What is, what's a more, what's a better engineered approach?
Well, one of the, the long-term goals that people talk about, whether it happens or not, is more nutrient credit trading, where you can buy from agricultural sources or the sewage treatment plant nutrient removal. If you could buy sewage, you know, the sewage treatment plant industry already trades credits. If that's more open to urban stormwater projects, we might be in better shape in the future. But right now, you know, the program kind of got off and running before the, all the details were worked out. So the program, in many instances, is playing catch-up as we are already working to meet the goals. Okay, the stormwater permit, we do about 100 tasks. Staff handles about 100 tasks each year in this document. They run from everything, from speaking at civic organizations to developing stormwater pollution plans, to keeping track of inspections and performing inspections. So that's ongoing and likely that will get more complex after 2018. The state is currently inspecting or trying to inspect every locality with a stormwater permit this year or next, so they may come visit. I have yet to hear of an inspection that didn't re, result in some sort of new infrastructure cost, so we're trying to prepare, but that's a real unknown. The stormwater permit major deliverables, we have to have a stormwater pollution prevention plan for the public works yard completed by fiscal year 2017, and we need to have an online storm drainage inventory in fiscal year 2018, so we'll be upgrading the GIS system as required by our stormwater permit. So you'll see that coming in the future. So the good news, the equivalent value of the four existing stormwater facilities that we receive credit for is about $590,000, at that $50,000 a pound of phosphorus removed. We received 11.8, or credit for 11.81 pounds of phosphorus removal for the four structures that were built between January of 2006 and June 30th of 2009.
As we turn in, like, the Lakewood, the, whatever, as we turn those into operating facilities, people will start to pick up credit on those as well?
Yes, when they come online. Right now, they need to have some more land draining to them.
Okay.
And that is it, basically. As I said, I'm going to bring the last two projects to you for the 2018 at council, and they are the subject of a grant, so.
Good question.
We talked at one time about getting credit for sewer and the entire city. Did we get any credit for that?
We did. If you read, in the Chesapeake Bay Program, we had a very interesting conversation or two with the state about getting the septic tanks online. Every time, we have only a handful of septic tanks left in the city. I'm not sure about the exact number tonight, but for everyone that has, that was hooked up, I think, in recent years, I'll say that, I have to pull out the year, we received some nitrogen credit, and that's why we're at 14% of the way to the nitrogen goal because of those septic tanks. So anytime it gets hooked to a sewer system, we get credit, so. Not a lot because we, the work was done too early, but a little bit.
It's like a, encourage. I have my initial, so you could get those credits as well.
Yeah.
We get nitrogen credit, we get no phosphorus or suspended solids credit for that.
We'll bring up some of that.
Okay, well.
Just gotta give us some time. Hey, Ellen, I don't want you to, you've done a lot of work over the two years, at least, over, and thank you for the 11 pounds of credit that you've given us. You're, you're, you're very well, probably, as I said, thank you very much for what you've done. Thank you for challenging the law and finding your experience and your knowledge. I appreciate that.
It was very good to bring a little bit of good news, so.
Yeah, you did. Very well done.
Anyway.
Thank you very much. And then we'll close this one. See you this Sunday. See you this August, this evening.